The meeting to order. Barbara, would you lead us in a invocation?
Certainly.
Please rise.
Dear God, dear higher power, please help us as we proceed through this hearing today, trying to determine what is in the best interest for the city of Benita Springs, in the best interest of public health, welfare, and safety. And please give us guidance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So there are no cases on the calendar today. And I thought we could use this opportunity to discuss what you think should be in our packets. And in thinking about it, there are, there's the architectural side of the presentation, which up until now, my observation has been, there's been almost nothing, notwithstanding that the statute allows for things. Second, how is the property going to be used?
I'm going to wait just a minute because we're not, oh, there it is. Microphones were off.
Oh, the microphones were off, okay.
That's better.
Before I go ahead, let's have a roll call. Thank you.
Robert and Serby?
Here.
Barbara, Barnes, Buchanan?
Here.
Russ Swin, Chairman Larry Carlander?
Here.
Richard Donnelly?
There.
Roger Bronzwick?
Yes.
James Wooster?
Here.
So we have the architectural side and the use side of every application. And I think we should discuss what your wishes are. And if we can decide on something that's fairly substantial, I will then go to the city council with it to see if they would agree that that would be their packet going forward. Because of course, up until now, it's my understanding that they get what we get plus our decision. I've also passed out for you the final part of the discussion. It's just some thoughts on what the format of the presentation should look like. This is not definitive by any means, and we should discuss what your wishes are. So with that in mind, John, I don't want to blindside you, but would you like to offer some thoughts?
Sure.
On what should be in the packet? Now, this is pending any changes in the law. So what we're asking for is what we should have under the existing law. I should tell you that on Friday, I have a phone call with David Theriault, Fred Forbes, and I believe city council counselor, to talk about the workshop. That has been a little bit delayed, given the hurricane and council's involvement with that, but I think we can get it scheduled pretty quick. So there will be down the road changes in the law, but that won't be for quite a while. So, John, why don't you, based upon our conversations and your own thoughts?
Yes, sir. What I think we're experiencing is a transition from, or a transition of priorities. Before, a lot of what was in the packet and a lot of what was presented both to you and to the city council was based upon what was legally needed to be in the record to establish a recommendation. What I think we're dealing with now is a situation where the uses and aesthetics of each of these projects are coming under increased scrutiny, and there is an increased interest in seeing what they're going to look like at the zoning level. As a result, several of the conversations I've had with Chairman Carlander and several other people have focused around how do we get to that point? How do we get to see more information? What is available to us, and how do we get there? And I think that what we've really started to bear down on are mixed-use commercial-type developments. And I say mixed-use only because if they're looking at, Horizon Park is a perfect example. When they're looking to bring to you commercial lots, they plan to sell off to somebody else and have them develop. Or if a development that they're trying to entitle is simply done to market the property so that they can sell it and have somebody else build it. In those situations, I think that there's been some frustration when the applicants have told you, "We don't know what it's going to look like. We don't know the exact use." The reason why we're looking for so many uses and we're looking for so much flexibility is so that when we market this property, we can market it to the greatest number of people. It's probably worked very well for them. It does not appear to be sitting well with both this board and the city council. And as a result, I think that we've kicked around some possible ideas to get us from what you are currently seeing to where you want to go, or at least where I think you want to go, with seeing more detailed information from an architectural perspective and also being a little more definitive in a use perspective. Some of those changes are going to require, as Chairman outlined, some code changes that are going to be pretty significant if we pursue them. Other things are very simple. I know there's been some complaints about being able to read the site plans because they're too small. We can simply change our applications to require larger plans. That can be done today. That is not a big change in terms of process. So the handout that you see that says "presentation format" is the chairman's idea, but it has come from several conversations that we have had, and I like to think I had a little bit of input on that.
What?
And the only things that I see on here are not wrong. I'd almost add to them. I know that in some of our discussions, not only that I've had with Mr. Carlander, but with several of you and council members, you tell me, "I have to go to the 10th page before I find out what the nature of the request is." And I have probably 15 pages of ownership information, which is probably very important at one level, but it should not be at the very front of an application packet. So if it's included at the back or part of the electronic submittal, that's fine, and if I need it, I can look to it, but I don't want that to be my opening few pages. So I think that what has been covered in the first section that says "cover sheet" is probably the most effective change, at least what we've come to so far. And I think that as opposed to limiting this, I would almost expand what goes on this and carry that into the document itself. But I would even add the location, when it says "type of case," "nature of request," and under the "application summary," also include any deviations or areas of disagreement that we have with the applicant. So that way, all of that information, things that we're going to be talking about or things that may be of interest to you, are listed up front. And then we have the ownership information, and then are the things that you may need to look at, but may not be the first thing that you want when you're trying to figure out what's going on.
If I can add on that, legally, you should not be looking at ownership because that should not play any equation in your decision-making, both you and city council.
And yet, oftentimes in the packet, we have 20, 30 pages of ownership documents with notary public signatures and...
Yes, and it is necessary so that the city staff doesn't inadvertently bring an application forward that we zone property by someone who does not have authority to request the zoning. So that part, it's very important for us. It's not something that should be in your decision-making process because zoning, you should not follow who owns the property because then you do favoritism and...
Couldn't agree more.
Does it have to be in our packet?
I think it has to be in the electronic, we're talking about two packets.
It is part of the application record.
So we'll get two packets. We'll get a printed one and an electronic one.
I think that what we've talked about a little bit, and I don't know how this board feels, is there are certain things that need to be included because they've been submitted and they're legally required. However, they may not be things that you care about or things you want to look at right away. So if it was part of your electronic packet that came to you, but it was not part of the printed sheet, one, that would save us some paper, and two, it would still allow you the ability to look at the information if you wanted to.
John, relative to those names in the printed packet, couldn't you just add a line that the legal requirements for notification and verification of ownership have already been made? They're included, just in its cover, and it would be then included in the electronic package?
Yeah, I mean, staff, because what staff has to do at the end of the process is the same thing, give them the signs to post and make sure they put in the affidavit that they have sent the letters out with the letter list. So I mean, instead of sending you the packets of who was notified, they can send you just a checklist saying they have it and it's available and on file with the community development department.
Sure, if anybody wants to dig into it.
Yeah.
It's there.
So what Jackie's concern is, we need to have things on the record for the, so that when we get, let's say, somebody challenges the city's decision, whether it is an adjoining property owner or the owner, you're able to show that they have it. While I'm saying that we could produce a checklist to you, it would be something we would provide on file from community development to the clerk's office.
Would, if you send us an electronic, if you send us an electronic copy that has everything in it, but you send us a, we pick up a physical copy that's considerably smaller, that would satisfy the law, would it not?
Yes, it would. I mean, it's the same as any other case. There are some different motions and pleadings that would never necessarily make, interrogatories, for example, unless you have an issue on interrogatories, it won't, you know, all the evidence that comes in won't necessarily go into the court record. Now, what Jackie's pointing out correctly is we need certain things in the record. So she would present it at the beginning of the hearing, and it'd be available from the city clerk should there be a challenge, or we could produce it. And one of the things, for example, what we call the boilerplate, things that nobody ever thinks about, is we have a self-authenticating sentence in the ordinances that are adopted that talks about all records that have been submitted. So it's not required that, we don't need to go through and show you every affidavit and post every affidavit. We can have that as a composite evidence or composite document. These are things you haven't received that are necessary for the filing, but not necessarily for the flow of the case, and they're prerequisites.
And you'll keep a copy of it in the room here in case somebody from the public...
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Was I on the notice list? You know, do I have standing?
Right.
Okay.
So let's go around the room if we can. I know, Mr. Donnelly, you've, from time to time, expressed some concern about architecture and the lack of, do you want to, anything that you want to add to that? Or anything, anything you want to speak about?
Happy to speak about architecture because that's what I do, although I'm not a Florida licensed architect. I have a master's degree in architecture and have done a lot of that type of work. And I, and I know how involved it is, you know? When you, when you design a building, it's like editing a novel or something that you've written. It's back and forth with a client and the budget and this and that, and involves a tremendous amount of work, time, and connection with your client. I think if, if we as a board begin to insert ourselves in reviewing architecture per se, I think that puts the applicant at a real disadvantage because he's coming in to find out, "Can I, can I do this? Will this concept work? Will this density work? Will these number of units work? Will this height of the building work?" Those are very general things that he needs to know before he goes on to the next step, which is the final design of the building. I think if, to the degree that we ask him for final architectural work early on in the phase, when he doesn't even know whether he's going to get approved or not, is an injustice to him. It might be appropriate to, and we've seen this happen in some of the presentations that we've received, architectural themes get developed, and that has been very helpful. And that would give us the authority to approve the general look of what the project might be without determining or without edicting the architect to really get into it and spend a lot of money, time, and design work with his, with his client. The other way to do this would be down the road or as a separate area, have a, some kind of an architectural review board that might be part of the development order process that John's group administers and oversees. So those are, I guess, two thoughts that I had off the top of my head about this.
Mr. Donnelly, I think, I think you make a very good point because you're right. Architecture is not something that happens quickly and is not something that happens easily. Those that do it very well, it takes time to, to create a building. But that being said, I'm not looking to limit us to a discussion of working within the existing framework. If we need to deconstruct that framework and build something that allows you to feel comfortable with a project as time goes on, let's build that new process. So while, I agree 100 percent. Architecture is something that has a place, and it generally comes a little bit later than uses, in terms of how the evolution of a site develops. But that doesn't mean that architecture can't be submitted to this board or to the city council. It just means that under the existing process, it's very difficult because as you're looking at its uses, and you're not even sure if a lot layout will be successful, to create detailed architectural plans for each particular building is probably a little ahead of its time. But under a different process, it can be very appropriate, under a different phased-type approval. It can be something that, that allows a property owner or developer to feel comfortable with their uses and design, and then work into the design of the buildings. So while I think you make a very good point, that needs to be considered, I don't want this board or the city council to feel obligated to stay with an existing process or formula that we've had simply for the sake of tradition. We can make that change and we can modify the process, especially if it gets you more timely information in a more detailed format. So at this point, probably the most productive thing would be to go through what you want to see and how you want to see it. Because if we know that, when we're going into this, this workshop discussion, we can really start talking about ideas of how to take those thoughts and put them into either a new process or modify our existing process so that you are comfortable with what you're receiving and we are comfortable with presenting it to you at that time. At least those are my thoughts right now.
So there are serious discussions going on as to the future of the, of the code.
Of the design code.
And that, of what will be in the land development code and what will be required when, including architecture. And that will be discussed at the workshop. Hopefully, no, nobody will make any decisions and everybody will have a chance for real input, not make-believe input. But one thing that has been raised is an architectural review board. Where that would occur in the process is, is an interesting thought, and not to take time, but just a comment. The issue is, who do you want deciding these questions? Do you want the elected officials? Or do you want the develop, the community development making those decisions? So one of the things that we'll talk about are, what are the best practices? What are our neighbors doing around southwest Florida? And see if we can come to some consensus, but it's actively being discussed. But what, under the current law, we are entitled to something, and oftentimes, we get nothing. And, you know, I've talked, I can't see what we get. I mean, it's, it's there, but it's not legible. It might as well not be there because I don't understand it and I can't, I can't make it out.
And really, if we're looking to make a change to that and have larger plans, if this board can all just nod your head that you would rather have 11 by 17 plans, we can start looking to change what's required? Anybody not want 11 by 17 plans?
Or 24 by 36.
Well, that, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. It becomes, you know, that becomes a little bit more of a shift when you put your, your packets together as an applicant. We can do that.
Not a full out...
Correct, correct.
Well, the statute calls for it.
It needs to be legible. That's exactly right.
Both, 11 by 17 and...
And 24 by 36.
Yes.
But I would also need an 8 by 11 because when I need to reduce it to ordinance form, I have to compact it. So if I can have something to scale or camera-ready for that purpose.
Can we have a 24 by 36 in the, in, back here to review or to look at? We don't each have to have that. That's even a bigger waste of paper. So I'm saying, up front here?
Oh, obviously, we can. I mean, we have them in our offices, generally what we review. However, it gets to the balance, and I think that you are both hitting on both sides of it. What becomes a waste of paper and what is a minimum size that the plans are legible? Giving you plans that you can't read is worse than giving you no plans at all.
Should we interject on the topics as they come up?
Yeah, absolutely. Just everybody chime in.
Okay, I, I agree. I can't read what we receive. It's too small. And I do recall years ago, also the aerials, I cannot read and decipher anything on it. Years ago, we used to have in the zoning packets, 1 to 300 scale, they were the aerials that were available with Lee County, and those were really nice. And if nothing else, it would be really helpful to have the folks on the zoning board just to have larger copies. Maybe in your regular packet, you leave them as smaller, you know, for what you're going to do. But, but it's, it's almost impossible to read what has been submitted, and I think that's really important, that we do have larger copies. And 24 by 36, maybe there's one page out of the drawings that would be the appropriate one, that's a larger size that we could get out of what's submitted. And, okay, I have some comments on the architectural side, too.
I just, if we're going to make a change in the size of the plans, like I said, I want to give you plans that you can read. So if they need to be 24 by 36, then we need to make the change to 24 by 36. But they will all be 24 by 36 because pulling out one page, which page is it? Because it may just be the plan. What about the aerial? I'd much rather give you an entire plan set that's legible, regardless of whatever the size is.
Well, I think, you know, definitely, the aerial should be a larger one, and I would recommend, since they are available, the 1 to 300 scale. It's already available and it can be printed, and you could have the, I know that the engineering firms now have the capacity to go ahead and they just generate their own...
Oh, yes.
...in their office. But if, either the 1 to 300, or if there, if someone wants to jump in and there's a slightly different scale that they like. But in the plan set, there's one drawing that is the one that probably needs to be the 24 by 36, and the rest probably don't need to be that large. And I would hate to see this city have to assume the cost associated with a complete packet of 24 by 36 when they'll, they'll be trashed.
What I'm thinking is, if we make a change here, it'll be a change in what's required to be submitted.
Right, right. So I, and I don't think it's fair to actually ask the engineering firms to submit full sets of, you know, 15 of them.
They are, they are submitting full sets of plans already. And what I'm, my thought on this is, you are not reviewing the plans, you're not doing your review at the hearing. You're doing your review after you pick up your packets sometime between then and today. So having a full-size set of plans in here may be good for our discussion, but it does not help you when you're looking at plans, looking at the landscaping, or looking at, at how certain access points are going to work. You need to have a plan set that's legible. And if the 11 by 17s were legible, that would have been great. However, I think no one is in favor of keeping the same size, and we are looking at providing something that's a little bit larger. So if we're going to do that, let's make sure that whatever we require allows you to do that review before you come to the hearing, and you don't have questions of, "I couldn't see this," or "This did not make sense to me." If you have questions on development, that's one thing, but if you have questions on what should be on a printed paper, that's, that's unacceptable.
Mr. Wooster?
I totally agree with what has been discussed here. I feel that we need to just let staff decide, do you understand our problem of being able to understand what the concept is that we're going to vote on? If it requires 24 by 36 or possibly even larger on huge projects, but I feel you understand it, and let's let that be a decision you make based on the project.
And the only reason I say that it needs to be a uniform decision is, applicants only want to submit the minimum of what is required to be submitted. If you tell them 11 by 17, they're not going to provide you 24 by 36. And that is so, and so the reason why I've just been saying, "Let's figure out what you need to be legible," is that way we can put in our land development code and on our applications, when you go to hearing, you're required to submit X number of copies of 24 by 36 for both the zoning board and for the city council.
So if the statute requires something, are you saying that it gets waived?
No. I'm saying that, that right now...
That the developer gets to decide what they want to submit?
No, it, but it is not as specific as a size of paper. And what I'm saying is, let's create a standard that means that whatever you get will be legible. It's supposed to be legible, but what is legible to someone with 20/20 vision is not the same as someone that does not have 20/20 vision.
With all due respect, I've given it to someone with 20/10 vision, and they couldn't read it.
So, so right now, I think the standard is a little more flexible in stating it just needs to be legible. I'm looking to create something that gives you a document that you can read.
And if I can make the suggestion that instead of going inside the ordinance, it goes in the administrative code, because this sounds like something that might be adjusted from time to time with different zoning boards.
It needs to come out of...
Right, it needs to come out of the, our zoning ordinance, in fact, our land development code, has a lot of information in it that's wonderful, but not necessarily needed to be in an ordinance. It might be better to be a policy or administrative regulation so to tell staff how to implement, as well as zoning board and council, how to implement.
And that's going to be a policy call. It can go in the administrative code probably more appropriately, but...
It's easier to amend and change.
Jim?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out one other thing earlier discussed by Mr. Donnelly. I certainly concur with the idea of a design review committee as appropriate for the city of Benita Springs, and would support that. I appreciate it's a new action, but I'm in favor. At one time, I was a licensed architect in the state of Florida. I am no longer because I'm retired, and I didn't want to pay the fee and do all of the CEUs, but I understand the situation from an architectural presentation at a zoning meeting, what should be required. However, there are certain things that come up when we're discussing height of buildings and setbacks and how that relates. And probably the best example of this, to point out what I'm talking about, is the southeast corner of I-75 and Benita Beach Road, that front lot where they wanted to put a gas station, my term. Well, we were trying to limit the height, so then all of a sudden, they were talking about the height of the canopy. And many, but if they didn't want to put a gas station, then they could put a three-story building in there. And all these things were laid on the table. Well, an architectural elevation, no detail, but an advanced sketch would be maybe the best way of saying it. Something like that would be very appropriate when it comes to discussion of building heights and variances from the code that deal with setbacks and the type of use. So let's, don't scratch the idea of submission of an architectural idea, if I can use that word, as to what we're trying to, what the applicant is trying to achieve in his... as to what we're trying to, what the applicant is trying to achieve in his application for approval. Does that make sense?
And I think usually that there is a graphic depicted with a request. Is it in the time of the development order?
The, the architectural approval is done with the development order. However, architectural themes, styles, and certain features can be done, and are easily done at the zoning level. Sometimes, there's no discussion in architecture, sometimes it's a very detailed discussion in architecture, depending on project and location. So I would say it's more varied at the zoning level, and then very specific at the development order level.
And if I can, we did have a planned, and I provided you a copy, I might have provided all of you with a copy probably about six, probably closer to a year ago, and that was the schematic designs. We do have a schematic design requirement for plan development. However, council was looking at making it more detailed, three-D architect type, so a better view of scale and massing, and that's probably some, I think, it was brought to council, it was proceeding, and then council postponed it, because I think they did want you to kind of get on board as to this, as to that design.
And the thing is, there's a number of ways this architecture can be required and reviewed. It can be done as part of the zoning process that you have now, which some people may like, some people may not like. You could do this as part of a two-step process, where you have a general approval that comes through, and then a final approval that has a lot more detail at a later date. You can have architecture handled at a very general level, both at your level and the city council level, and then either a city architect or an architectural review board handle things after, after those zoning approvals are given. So the process can vary widely. That's probably gonna be something that we discuss a little bit more at, at the zoning workshop. But what's, what I think would be very helpful is if you let us know what you want in terms of architecture. And I think Mr. Worcester started going in that direction, which to me sounded like, if you wanted to request a use, we at least need to see at a conceptual level what that use is gonna look like on the property. So you may ask for twenty different uses, I just need to see twenty different drawings that show what those uses are gonna look like. Did I pick up generally what you...
Yes.
So that is, that's a reasonable possibility.
Mr. Director, before, before we go there, let's finish up. I think we reached consensus on the drawings. Am I correct that it's the will of the board that we will leave it up to staff to give us legible copies? Or do we want to have particular sizes?
I think we should have particular size. And I think the one to three hundred works pretty well on the aerial. And on the site plan, twenty-four by thirty-six for the, the main drawing, you know, that they submit, that would be helpful. And then I also have some comments still on the architectural side.
Let's stick with the size, just for a second, and move that, that doesn't, that's an important point, because within those drawings, there's a story. And if, if the drawings were legible, in most cases, it would tell the whole story.
It would.
Right, and so this is really, really important.
Picture's worth a thousand words.
There you go. So what... Mr. Vice Chairman, any thoughts on that, on the size of the drawings?
I think she's got a good idea as far as the size goes, but if it works, if it works for us, then that's what we should do. We should go with that. You know, I mean, for everybody's in agreement on that. There definitely is a problem as far as taking a look at it, you know, there's no doubt about that. But I'd like to go along with Barbara's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman? Richard?
I agree with Barbara's thoughts.
Comment I would make, though, is now that we're getting the packets electronically, we have the ability with the P, with the possible exception of you, Bob, who, we get, we can get a PDF file now. And I can look at any section of any of those drawings I want and make it as large as I want. Maybe, you know, with the exception of you, Bob, who doesn't have that capability at this point.
When I blow it up on my computer, it doesn't help at all.
It doesn't?
No, I get, I get blurriness, I get, and I, I actually, I, I, I'm, you know, I have, I have a Mac, which is pretty good.
So you have a good resolution.
Pretty good on graphics, I got a, you know, really big screen, and so I'm able to do it, and I'm struggling. I tried it that way.
All right, I've tried it, and I, I guess what I've looked at, it's been successful.
Okay, so...
And we can look at the electronic format, too, so that's not, that's not a problem.
So from our perspective, the suggestion of Barbara Braun's Buchanan will, that's our wish.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just adding to it a good electronic PDF, because that's where, to prepare the end document, I need to have things so that when we later on look at, in the record, it makes it a lot easier.
But the point that was made is that when I'm getting ready, I need to have it in front of me.
And I guess a question is, are the applicants now required to submit a CD? And then when you guys make copies, I'm assuming it's from a copying a copy? And maybe that's where the problem's coming in, because we're getting, you know...
Second and third generation copies.
Or more, yeah. And, and then it just gets maybe blurry, yeah.
Yeah, sometimes that happens, too, because we like to put in your packets the actual date-stamped copy. So you can see it's the most recent version of the plans. It's harder for us to do that, excuse me, on a, on a PDF, but, I mean, we can still create a electronic stamp, but yes, that's...
I would think that would be the better approach, the electronic stamp, because it, you know, and then as long as staff make sure that the electronic copy we're looking at correlates to the direct, the latest and greatest. Because remember, they may get ten MCPs during, even before you get to hearing, and then after hearing, there may be one or two more.
Okay, so let's sum up this. We will be getting at least in some, on some of the documents, twenty-four by thirty-six, where it's appropriate to have eleven by seventeen or smaller, or it's totally legible. But on the main documents, we'll follow the statute.
And just bear with us in the short term, because we'll probably be sending this out to get reproduced until we change our, our code requirements, because right now, the applicants are not required to turn these in, but we'll try our, our best to get them copied for you at that size, so you can read it.
And actually, John, you could probably tell us which exhibits that you're, the exhibit numbers? What is it, exhibit four, five, six, you know, that had the site plan?
Mm-hmm.
So it's probably one of those. Do you, I don't have it in front of me, the list of how the exhibits are in the zoning application.
I don't, I know what, I don't know the number, but I know what you're saying, yes.
So, I mean, there's one exhibit in there that is the actual site plan? And so that would be the exhibit that would need to be the twenty-four by thirty-six?
Yes, I think we're all in agreement with that.
Okay.
Okay.
So on the, moving on, continuing with the, with the architecture, under the current statute, not what we hope to change in design review boards, stuff like that, is there anything else that we reasonably would request under the existing statute?
In reference to the architectural, I think it's really important that the city, in one form or another, either through one of the advisory board's staff, I know that we're trying to do it with, I guess, and who's doing it now? Who's the outside consultant that's doing the architectural review?
Sam Vincent.
Okay. My concern with zoning is that we still review the zoning case for the land use and the transportation impacts first. Density and what the traffic may do to our roadway system. You know, I mean, I think that's really one of the fundamental purposes for compatibility. And then, then it moves on to more of the architectural side. And I know that when you're putting something together, and the architects that are here could probably add a little more, there's, there is a cost associated with it above and beyond your normal zoning case. When I was doing some consulting, I, I do remember that I think the least expensive rendering was just in a general area of five thousand extra dollars to your, your plans. Because generally with your zoning packet, you have your general planners that, you know, start on a conceptual drawing, and then you put all this together. And, and normally, it's a case where the owner or developer of the property is starting with a smaller budget, just to see if, if they can get the first phase through, and that it might even be feasible for them to move forward, and if they have to, you know, complete a purchase on a piece of property. So I guess, I'm just not sure how onerous it might be from a financial perspective on doing the architectural drawings at an early stage where you're trying to move forward through zoning. And I'm, I'm not sure where we are with the city. Has the city actually made a recommendation as to what type of architectural design they're looking at? I know that it's been discussed back and forth, and it was, it's never been totally definitive.
Well, there's, there's, I think, four or five architectural styles that have been identified in the land development code.
So it goes back to the same thing we had before?
It's, it's a little bit different than what you had before. In fact, it's a lot more expansive in terms of architectural features and what constitutes a certain style. However, the only, the only portion of the city that has looked to one architectural style is Old Forty-One. The other areas of the city, we prefer Old Florida, but there are a handful of other styles that are just as accepted.
And I want to point out, this is in chapter three, which is our development standards section. And it's important, well, I'll let you decide whether it's important or not, but in my opinion, it's important to have it as a development standards requirement, because not all new development goes through zoning. Some of it is able to utilize its conventional zoning, or it received its zoning entitlements maybe ten years ago, and they kept it up, or twenty years ago, and they kept it up, or forty years ago, and they kept it up. Because we do have properties like that. So what I would, if we wanted to try something different, and, and going with what Barbara suggested, utilize a first review, have a condition similar to what you have for transportation, which says there may be other reviews at, in that one, you have, there may be additional reviews for concurrency or for transportation requirements later on, because, you know, you're working with a moving puzzle. And add another condition that has a, you know, subject to final site plan approval, and then bring it back again for that review, once they have a little more definitiveness, what uses are the end uses on the property? I mean, that's a way that you can handle that.
But rather than make it up on the fly, the statute for two ninety-five lays it out. I mean, if we don't like the statute, let's change the statute, I, I don't have a problem with that.
But not everything's a plan development, also.
I understand that, but a large number of things we hear are plan developments. And if we dealt with that, perhaps...
I don't disagree. I'm just thinking as far as process, something in which if an applicant is going to not meet the first test of compatibility, intensity, density, the, the normal issues that we've always looked at. Barbara used transportation, but you could equally, it could be environmental, it could be stormwater. You know, these are all critical issues in a particular development. Have it go through a one-pronged review, and then if it meets that first prong, then look at the second prong when it's closer to development. Because having an entitlement, nothing is worse than somebody spending, well, are things worse, of course, but, you know, somebody's spending a fortune to go through their entitlements, and then the next owner comes in and says, "Well, we want to change X, Y, Z." And you probably hear that every day.
And, and we have a zoning workshop that's coming up to discuss process and specifics. And the reason why I'd almost kind of look to that date is because there is gonna be some discussion on how other municipalities or other counties handle the same process that you're wrestling with right now. And we can figure out, not only, one, what you're looking for, but, two, how, how does that middle requirement or that review requirement fit into an overall approval process? If you let us know, and I think we're working down that path, what you want to see and how you want to see it, the process will generally lay itself out, because the more specific you are in what you want to see, there's only so many places that that submitted requirement can come in. So if, I, I think that, you know, some of the concerns about architecture and design and layout, keep telling me what you want, because the more you tell me, the easier it is gonna be to come up with a process.
Mr. Chairman, along that same line, John, the site, and regarding site plans, whatever's presented, that becomes germane to the request of the applicant. They'll be requesting so many units, or so many square foot, square feet of a commercial or retail, or so many units on residential. Historically, since my tenure on this board, the request of the applicant typically is way more, either square footage or number of units, than could possibly fit on the site. Now, if he were required to do a, a site plan that would indicate the square footage for commercial retail, or number of units for commercial, or two-site plans, if he's asking for, it may be commercial, it may be residential, and that's very valid. But make them realistic, because, and, and not only that makes it realistic for what we're looking at and approving, but parallel with that, they might come back in a year later and say, "Wait a minute, I have approval for seventy units. I want to cut it down to sixty, but when I do that, I want you to waive this or that." Well, sixty doesn't fit either. And, but they use that as leverage, and have used that as leverage, to ask for conditions or deviations in the past, which is totally inappropriate, in my opinion. If somebody's going to change, or ask for a change in the current zoning, or change in a current variance or application that may have expired, well, they need to just forget about that, what has been already approved, and go back to the original zoning, and work from that as a basis for what they're now gonna request on, say, an expired one. I'm, I'm putting two issues before you at the same time, but they tie together. And, and the site plans will define that, if they're done based upon what fits for the applicant's request.
And let's talk about realistic for a second, because I think you're onto something, but I want to be, I want to make sure I get all of that down. When you say realistic, I'm assuming you're wanting the location and size of proposed buildings, parking, access, and what else would you like to see for it to be a realistic plan?
Well, concurrence to setbacks.
Okay.
Which would have to be a park, that's a separate issue in this discussion, but, but we'll talk about it later, I'm sure, but, but have it, all of those things you mentioned, parking, access, and so forth, have all of those things.
Right there. Right there.
There it is.
So for plan development applications, there are requirements, again, it's in 4-295, and a lot of that is required now. The director has the ability, if he thinks something is not necessarily, he can waive it. An example might be a tree species survey, and there's the property's, you know, barren. So that might be something, he might say, "No, you don't need to turn it in," or a traffic analysis where one was done in the past year or so.
Is there something in the statute that gives him that authority?
He has the authority in the Land Development Code, yes.
And could you tell me where that is, if you recall?
Um, let me take a look at 4-295, because I think it's in there.
Okay.
But I can...
Just curious.
Sure.
Okay.
And he has that discretion. He has a lot of power.
Yes, he does.
Audrey, he can only waive a requirement of this tree species thing that you're talking about, is it's a requirement to be identified, but if there's no trees on the site, then he's waiving it. Is that the way I understand it? You're not waiving the...
He can waive other things. I mean, he can look at an application. For example, if we know an application might be something strongly desired for, let's say, economic development is a priority, and it is strongly desired, and he knows that some things we don't need because we've had prior reports or prior development order nearby, we have good information, he can make that, it's his, within his discretionary authority.
And it comes as a request on the applicant's part?
I don't remember seeing that, Counselor.
It comes as a request from the applicant that is either approved or denied. But that can also be something that we look at in terms of the process.
So we would be presented as a part of our package that you have waived that requirement?
It would, there would be a request from the applicant...
As it may or may not occur.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You would see, you would see documentation of that.
Okay.
Okay, that's all right, as long as we...
Right, you would know if he did it.
Right.
Jim, let me, let me ask you, we're getting a lot of the things now that you mentioned. I mean, we're, we're getting a site plan, you know, that, that usually shows the setbacks, you know. I mean, is that, are you saying that's deficient, we need more, or what, what do you...
Well, sometimes we get it. Sometimes we get bubble diagrams that say, "I want to put 60 units here, I want to put 4,000 square feet there." When, when 40 units is all you could possibly get on the site, if it's residential, for example. Or 25,000 square feet's all you could get on when you talk about parking requirements for that 25 square, 25,000 square feet. You have certain parking requirements that also fill up the site. How much room is there to get on what they're requesting? We, sometimes we get it, and it is appropriate, and it's valid. Sometimes it's totally subjective, typically requesting more than they could possibly get in, you know, on the site during the LDO process. And it shouldn't be up to the LDO project, process to sort that out. We should limit what they can do at the zoning and council, in my opinion.
But, but it's reviewed by, by staff, and, and...
Correct.
Those kinds of devia, those kinds of problems get flagged, don't they?
What, the, the situation, this is, I have a pretty good idea of the situation, because it's not the first conversation I've had with this. At the zoning level, people generally ask for more than they can build, because they don't want to come back for zoning approval if something changes and they fit an additional couple of hotel rooms or units onto a piece of property. So as, if they know that they, they need 60 units to make a project work, they may ask for 70. And along with that 70, the detail of where those 70 units is going to go may or may not be adequate with either members of the zoning board or the city council. Then, Mr. Donnelly, you are correct. Regardless of what goes into the zoning approval, there are development standards in place in terms of setbacks, size, parking, landscaping, that, that are reviewed at the development order, that would limit the number of units, so that 70 units that may have been approved at the city council, I think the concern is Mr. Worster's looking at that as, as a false number, and approving it at that number is not really an approval or an official review, because it was never realistic. The applicant had padded what they wanted to make sure they didn't have to come back if they fitted a few more units in there, or if they were selling the property to somebody else that looked more attractive. Have I outlined?
Yes.
And, and so I think the concern is, at this point, when you're looking at a review, or you're looking at a submittal that comes into you, is this, and several members, I think, have already voiced that it's not, is this acceptable to look at, at a number that's requested but may not be able to fit on a site, only to be limited at the development order? Or is it a better review from a zoning board and city council perspective to see that accurate number, have that approval, and if the number changes, have them come back or handle it at a later date?
I'm somewhat at a loss, excuse me. If someone comes in with a plan that obviously doesn't fit, because they're playing a game that's been played for a long time, granted, why not simply say, "I'm sorry, come to us with a plan that fits?" I mean, it's a simple, it's a simple thing. You can end the game, you can end the game very, without legislation, without anything, just by you saying, "It's over. Come, come with a plan that fits on the site, and then we'll have a discussion."
That's exactly right.
And then there shouldn't be anything for us to decide, or the city council, in the initial, if, if, if somebody submits something that's violative of the law, they should be told it. It's violative of the law, have a nice day. If it's within the law, fine. And if we don't like the law, let's change it. To give them the opportunity to submit stuff outside the law. I mean, it seems like a simple...
Mr. Chairman? I, I've, I'm familiar, over the last few years...
Yes, sir.
Cases that have been, where people have been sent away and come back, and, and the golf course is a perfect example.
Yes.
I don't know how many times that's come up for discussion in planning. They've been back and forth, back and forth. So that does happen. Now, but there's other instances that you referred to, and there was recently, not too many months ago, there was a, a hotel issue that came to us, and it was obvious from the get-go that there was not enough parking, that the, 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 the plan was too large for the space, parking would be an issue, and, and so you, it's kind of hit and miss. You catch a lot of them, some of them get by. I don't know how you, I don't know, you can never be 100% perfect.
Yeah, but that, the one you mentioned, the, the hotel, something of that magnitude that it gets here...
That it gets here at all.
It, it, it boggles my mind, to be honest with you. I, I, I don't get it.
That one was so obvious.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The history of that was it started at this many units, and then went to this many units, and then it went to this many units, and finally at the city council, it wound up to this many units.
Right.
Do you sometime, do you, do you sometimes get to the point where you just kind of throw up your hands and say, "Well, let's see what the zoning board says"?
Well, at this point, we're limited to the number of times we can require somebody to respond to us.
State statute.
And, and so there are, there are areas that we agree with applicants, and there's certain amount of, there's a certain amount of flexibility that I think is prudent planning, but there is a clear line, and I think that you identified a project that went well past that line. Unfortunately, after, after a certain level of review, we can simply state, "We don't like this," or "We would recommend X," and it has to go forward. So I don't, I don't disagree with, with your intentions. I, I agree 100%. I mean, we've had discussions, and, and what you're looking for, I think, provides for a better document, it provides for something more specific that you can review. And I think for about 90 to 95% of applications that come in, there won't be a question. There'll be about 5 to 10% of people that don't want to, to go along these lines, and you'll wind up with a more contentious hearing. But I would much rather handle that through a clear statement of what is expected, and have them fight that clear expectation than to, to go on interpretation in some standards that have been applied differently through different periods of time. Because there has been certain levels of flexibility that has been allowed by previous councils that they expected, because they wanted it.
Right. It's kind of a no-win situation where staff will go, and they would love to do the full presentation, and sometimes the decision-makers, sometimes it's the zoning board, "Hey, I want to get out for lunch, you know, please hurry up, get this done," and there's things we need to get into the record. So there's certain dances we need to do in order to have a sufficient record, so we have to have substantial evidence to uphold the decision-making.
However, I think that it is a much easier argument to make if, if what you want is clearly outlined in the format you want to see it. If somebody wants to fight that, that just makes it a harder fight for them. But a, a clear, and, and I think one of the reasons I'm looking at what we want to see in the future, as opposed to focusing on what's necessarily in the package, is if you make a clean break from how you've done things to how you want to do things, tradition, history, and precedent carry much less weight. This zoning board, this city council has certain priorities, as every zoning board and every city council do. And those priorities need to be reflected in what you want to see. And I would much rather take this opportunity where we are, we are deconstructing and really taking apart our, our process and requirements, and putting them back together, and take this opportunity to get what we want out of the process, as opposed to, to trying to debate, "Well, this section says X, no, it says Y." What do you want to see, and let's put it in there.
Here's my, my problem. We are charged with giving the city council our best informed judgment. If we are required by practice and tradition, as opposed to law, to send them things we know are violative of the law, I think we are failing them. I don't think it's more complicated than that. And I think we have an obligation to the mayor and to the council to give them our best judgment based upon the facts and the law as it exists. Period.
And if I may answer your other question from earlier?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, Section 4-194...
Four, 194.
4-194 states that this is the general submittal requirements for all applications, whether it's a variance, whether it's a special exception, a plan development, conventional zoning, whatever, DRI. This is the, the granddaddy, the, the basic beginning, and it says, "For all applications, you must submit certain things." However, upon, and then it gets into plan developments and all the, the specifics later, "Upon written request on a form prepared by the city, the director may modify the submittal requirements contained in this section, where it can be clearly demonstrated that the submission will have no bearing on the review and processing of the application." The request and the director's written response must accompany the application submitted, and will become part of the permanent file.
Thank you. So getting back to my point, do you disagree with that, John? I mean, am I wrong?
No, in fact, in fact, I agree with you so much, I want to make sure that what you're looking for is, one, what you're getting, and, two, if we need to make changes so that you get what you want, we make those changes. So...
Mr. Worster?
Couple of weeks ago, when this meeting was sort of established, I prepared some documents that I had presented to the board.
Yes.
Excuse me, I presented to city staff, and I have no idea if those have been, had been distributed to this board.
There are, yes.
Yes. Item number one, under site plan, about...
Does everybody have a copy of the packet?
I do.
Or the agenda?
No.
We have some up front, I'll get, Bob needs one.
Okay, well, wait, let me just quickly say that what we've talked about here is outlined in what I've said, so it's in writing. And I think it's exactly what we've agreed to here that you understand, John. So, so you, you've got something to look at as opposed to minutes of a meeting, this meeting.
Yes, sir.
If you agree, do you agree with that?
When it comes to this type of information, it's really more of, of what you're looking for and what the city council authorized, as opposed to what I agree with. That's why I was looking to have this board nod their head with some of the, the topics that you had in here.
Okay, that, that's fine. And I, I think that's what's occurred here this morning. Okay, thank you.
I found it very helpful, Jim, the materials you submitted. It really is a good guidepost.
Okay, but some of that, that I submitted is not appropriate for this meeting.
Well, yes, some of it is, some, some of it is for the, is for the workshop, yes. But the, the things that are, I, I personally found it very helpful. Thank you very much. So how, how do we conclude this section? How, how are we going to handle this? We're basically talking about the site plan, and what...
What, what I think that you're going to see is, we'll just take what we have from our submittals and make you the larger copies while we're modifying the standards of submittals, so that, that'll be what the applicant provides, as opposed to what we're making copies for. But that way, you should have more legible copies when they come to you as part of your packet. I think what we're looking at is, we've identified some areas of conversation that will come up on the zoning workshop, one for priorities of, of review, two, the process of review. There are some things in terms of more specific requirements that I think should go into applications now, and there are other requirements that I think that we can probably look to have both you and the city council modify, or at least recommend changes to, so that you're getting what you want. However, at this point, I think that what you're going to see is a modified staff report and larger and more clear plans submitted to you.
But with regard to what we were just discussing, that, that Jim originally raised and I commented on, if they come to us with something that's clearly outside the parameters of the law, we have a right, I believe, under the statute, to say, "We're sorry, we're not going forward until you correct this."
You, you can...
Stop right now, don't, we don't have to have a, a hearing.
It's not so much a stop.
You're outside.
Correct. I, I think that what you...
You're outside the boundaries.
What you have a right to do is to, to state either the information that's submitted or the request itself is inconsistent and incompatible with the standards of the comp plan and the Land Development Code, and recommend the city council deny the application, which is, which is your charge, and our charge, is to make that recommendation. So as opposed to, the only area I think that we disagree on is where you said, "Stop," it wouldn't necessarily be a stop, it would be a recommendation for denial.
Or could it be a continuance to get, gather more information?
Exactly.
If, if you have a situation where they're, they're agreeable to that, yes, sir.
Well, we have, we have an absolute right to ask for a continuance.
I think so.
Oh, you, you, yes, you do.
We have an absolute right.
Yes, you do. And you do, staff does, the applicant all have a right to, to one continuance.
One continuance.
What, what I clarify that, if you have an applicant that has no intention of making a change, you can continue or you can not continue. I don't know what change it would make to, to the plans. However, if you have a, a agreeable applicant, that continuance can be very productive.
So, but only you know that. We don't necessarily know how agreeable the applicant is.
Yes, sir. I, I probably have a good feel for those areas that we've discussed. If it's something that comes up in your hearing that I've not discussed with them, I may not know any more information on how they feel about it than you do.
Should it even come to a hearing if you don't feel that, huh? I don't think so.
I, I don't think I have much of a choice on some of these items. If, if they want to bring an item forward, they have the, the right to petition their government, and it should go to a hearing. It does not mean the hearing has to end with a, a recommendation for approval or approval, but I think they have a right to a hearing if they push that issue.
And we have those cases from time to time, where, remember, staff needs to let the process go forward after an application has been deemed sufficient. And sufficient means they turned in the requested information as required here. It doesn't mean staff has to like it, it doesn't, you know, staff can try to work with them and try to provide conditions that if council approves it and zoning board recommends its approval, can make it work, hopefully. Just because staff makes recommendations of conditions doesn't mean necessarily staff recommends approval. And we have a difficult step, and that, that's one of the hardest things, is staff can recommend denial, but should you want to approve it, have conditions, because the worst thing that, in, in staff's mind, or certainly the worst thing in my mind, is that this board or city council desires to approve... that this board or city council desires to approve something and no one gave them conditions to ameliorate some of the unintended consequences that staff knows or reasonably knows could occur.
Let me ask for the, how you all feel. So let's assume that they come in and they've got a project that obviously will not fit on the property. How would you feel if I said, this is obviously outside, this can't possibly fit on the property, this board would like to give you an opportunity to put, to change it, and we're going to order a continuance? I think that, I don't think I can do that unilaterally. I think I need your support to do it.
You'd make a motion.
So I would make a motion. How would you feel about that if I did that? I don't want to make a motion.
I think it's very appropriate.
It is.
I'd like to suggest that.
You okay with that?
Now.
Mr. Chairman?
There's two ways.
Are you all right with that, Barbara?
Yeah. Saves, it saves everybody a lot of time.
Absolutely.
A lot of time.
But should never get here. My point was that at a staff level, they should have been stopped for that very same reason, so therefore.
But they may very well have been, but they could only do that, what, how many times? Two times? They could only do that two times. The third time, they have the right to the hearing. And then at that time, we can make motion.
And so anybody here can make that motion.
And we can only, we can only make that continuance motion one time, correct?
Well, you, each party.
As a matter of right.
Yes.
So we can make it one time, they can, you can continue it one time.
And the applicant.
And the applicant, so that's, there could be three continuance, there could be two applications and three continuances.
Actually, here's my understanding.
Give me a second, please.
We have, as a matter of right, we have, we can ask for a continuance.
We should exercise.
That does not limit us from asking for another continuance, but it is no longer a matter of right.
And a couple of comments. Frequently, the folks representing potential development may indicate that there are some various engineering designs that could be implemented into the plan to make it work. For instance, water management on the site, maybe it's done in a vault system underneath the building and your parking is down there and the water management is underneath it. So, I mean, I think we just have to be very careful as to not limiting a property owner's rights to proceed and due process and have it reviewed. Question I have also that kind of falls in that discussion, it has to do with vesting on properties that come in. Do we currently in the staff report have a section that addresses that vesting? We were in a hearing here, and I recall there was one particular case where their legal representative made a comment after one of the comments from, I think, the board as to that they were vested in a certain amount and that not moving forward in a review may result in some type of legal action.
And if I.
Yes. It's included.
If I may, because vesting is a legal term, it's not really a zoning term. So vesting is when equitable estoppel or some other rights, equitable estoppel, I can go through the elements if you wish, but some other rights exist that bar the government from making new requirements. And it's very fact specific, it's very much ingrained on case law as to make a determination whether or not there's vesting. People will throw vesting towards the city right and left, and we have very specific criteria as to what is actual vesting, and some of it is even by calculation where you need to have a certain amount of development already occur. The exception to this rule is developments of regional impact, of which the city of Panera Springs has probably more than the average city, and they tend to be large developments, and they have spent millions to perfect certain rights because they didn't only get reviewed by the local government, they also were reviewed by regional planning council, I think at one point, 10 state agencies. And just, you know, so there are some vesting, but even that can be questionable at times. Just want to point out to you guys, this statement I just said is subject to change because the Florida legislature already filed a bill this year to make things permanently vested and pretty much kicked the local governments out on the keister for changes in DRIs. So I might, depending on what the legislature passes, I might have a totally different statement coming up.
And just so you know, what we'll include in the staff report is any previous approvals and what those approvals included. So that's the more informal answer.
It's the history of the property.
The more formal answer, I think, city attorney just provided you.
And if I can, city initiated continuances, I'm going to agree with Chairman Kurlander and with zoning board member Buchanan, it's Barnes Buchanan, in that the way the continuance reads, staff is entitled to one continuance as a matter of right. However, each decision making body has the authority to grant additional continuances upon a showing of good cause for the city, and then the applicant has their own. Now, and there are no limitations to the number of city initiated continuances, and it could be because staff needs it, it could be because applicant, it could be because property owners. However, as pointed out well by Barbara, I'm going to have to go less formality here, you need to be careful that you don't violate due process. Due process is another thing that has been well defined over the years, there's abundant cases. If it looks like you're just keeping people in the purgatory, that would be problematic. But if you're allowing things to go forward and it's needing to progress, the case is certainly permissible.
Mr. Chairman, just to provide a little more information, how would you like these requests to be presented to you by staff? When, because when you see this and you realize that you can't fit 200 hotel units on an acre, obviously, we've probably already seen the exact same thing, how are you wanting this information presented to you?
Good question.
The ones he's turning, the ones that staff is sending back for further review modification. I think, Mr. Chairman, wouldn't a memo from them that a specific project has been sent back to further review suffice, maybe to the chairman, to the board?
And that's fine, because what we've done in the past, and just because we've done it in the past, does not mean we should do it in the future, but what we've done is if we know that there's a problem with something and we think that it's not going to be something that can be easily sorted out at the development order level, we will simply state that we can recommend approval for maybe 75 hotel units as opposed to the 200 units that they've already proposed. But that, I tell you that only as a matter of history, not as a recommendation of how we should go forward. I can bring these to you a number of ways. I would, I agree with what you're saying, and I think that especially some of the points that Mr. Worcester has identified, both in writing and verbally, if we're not able to come to an agreement with an applicant, or they do not want to provide the same type of information that you're requesting, do you just want us to point that out in the recommendation, or do you want there to be a memo?
I think you need to flag it.
And I'll look at flags being something that can adjust based upon the type of request and.
So back to my question on vesting.
Please.
Do we actually have something in the staff report that alerts us if there's an issue on it? I mean, does.
It would be in the history of the, like, for example, if somebody put in an application for a plan development, historically, they have a plan development, they want to amend the plan development to, for property, the property's already been divided, that, this happens frequently, and so they want to zone a parcel within a parcel that's previously, I would say anything external, you would not be able to review. I mean, the application would only be for the portion that they're looking to change as well as, you know, there could be things that have vested, usually, like I said, vesting, there's a calculation, so if, to give a good example, let's say the property has been platted, the property already has its infrastructure in place, and you say, well, actually, we want this road moved because we never liked it in this location in the first place, and you're actually asking to move a physical road, I think that would easily win a vesting argument that they are vested with that existing road that's built as opposed to things that are paper roads, a whole nother world.
So you're saying that we are putting that into the information in the staff review?
Staff history.
We put in the history most of the time unless someone is specifically making a vesting argument, the word vesting generally will not be in the staff report simply because, as was outlined, it's more of a legal term than a planning term, but I think that if it becomes a point of contention or a point where the application swings, we will go into the detail that we need to for your review.
Well, isn't that somewhat appropriate to have in the background because that seems like it limits some of the review.
Except for the fact that, I think when you're looking at the word, and let me give a case where an actual vesting will have occurred. I just lost a case. It's a case that makes me upset. So it's not personal or anything, it's the Carter Pritchett sign. So let's say they need to do a replacement, they do need to obtain a variance for the location that they're going, and you're going, this is crazy, we're allowing a two by 10, you know, piece of wood to be replaced with a massive structure. I have a court order, I have to follow what the court order says. You know, we appealed it, we got what's called PCA, per curiam affirmed, meaning that the review courts would not write an opinion for us, that we could then appeal further. So I'm waiting for the time to run, I'm stuck with that order. That would be something that would be vested, would be in the history report of an actual vesting. But an actual vesting is when the courts tell me I can't do something, or alternatively, when city council has said, yes, we think the application of equitable estoppel would apply. Everything else is just mere argument. And let's get one more evidentiary thing here. You are an evidentiary board, you follow rules of evidence. For the most part, when you produce evidence, it needs to be either physical, whether it is in writing, photographs, things go in, are entered into the record, test, or sworn testimony. When a lawyer is talking, unless they are talking as a fact witness, and some are as a fact witness, it is argument, it is to persuade your decision making, it is not necessarily evidence, and that's where they need to have their planners, that's where they need to have, if it's controversial. Otherwise, they can rely on the city staff planners, but they need to have the correct people who are qualified. A lawyer is going to try to run to your sympathy, a lawyer is going to try to run to maybe what they think is a logical argument, but may have some areas where they've had a supplement to make that logic work. And, not that I wouldn't do the same thing, so make it very clear here, make sure that you are looking at the evidence. So trying to address legal argument, especially when it has not occurred, is almost difficult. If there's an actual binding court order or council has given us that direction, that's the only time where you would actually see vesting.
But yes, in those cases, you see them in the staff report.
Okay, so are you satisfied with that?
Mm-hmm, on that one.
There are other, other issues in the presentation that we might want to consider.
I'd like to talk about setbacks.
Please.
I think it's very appropriate, based on history. Setbacks are in the code for a reason. Typically, the, any request to adjust a setback by the applicant is for the purposes of increasing the density on the site. Typical example, just recently, Hidden Lakes down on 41. If the setbacks hadn't been waived, the density of that project would have been dramatically really reduced. So therefore, our density requirements that we have for various sites, various uses are meaningless because people come in and ask for waivers, and they, a lot of times, have received same. I think setbacks should have the same authority as a property line, in that you don't move a property line. Why would you move a setback? Setbacks are there for, and again, in this dialogue that I turned in a couple of weeks ago, I have seven or eight reasons why setbacks are even there, which I think are all valid. And I'd like to understand staff's reasoning to waive setbacks. To me, because the fire station says we can get a fire truck back there is not a reason. However, I've seen that as the only reason that's been presented to waive a setback. That's in no code where it says that.
It is. It's in the.
Okay, I couldn't find it, thank you.
And I'm just going to pull that real quick.
But let's talk about the larger question that Jim has raised. He's raising a very important point.
Two counterpoints for discussion.
All right.
The first is the history of your land development code, and it is set up as a code for the county, which means by its very nature is a little more suburban than what would currently be created today. You can, you can look at that as something or a reason to modify the setbacks, or you can just look at that as a real reason to change the code. Either way, something to discuss. The second item is a clustering requirement that we have in our comprehensive plan, and the reason why some people, and I don't say all, but some, request the reduction in setbacks is because if they're going to preserve other area or create open space in other portions of their site, they look to create tighter development patterns on a smaller portion of the site as opposed to taking up more of it with impervious space. In those particular cases, it's rather easy to recommend approval because it does preserve additional green space, it does preserve additional open space, and a lot of the items that you have identified, not all, but most of the items you've identified here are consistent with that thinking. The item you had talked about, well, the fire district says they can get a truck back there, so it's okay, when you're talking about preserve management plans and how the fire district looks to have a certain amount of defensible space between a structure and a preserve, that's where that can particularly lie, and for those requests, or a request that lies specifically with the fire district or is intended to provide for their protection, I rely upon their review. If they tell me they like an idea, then I can recommend approval. If they tell me that this will not work and they are not in favor of it, then we don't recommend approval of those deviations. So just a couple of quick thoughts.
Okay, and I understand that if fire, fire access, fire control access is important, and yes, you use setback areas. However, if the setback is from a preserve area, let's just say 15 feet, now pulling that out of the air as an example, and they want to reduce it to 10 feet, well, maybe a fire truck can still get back there, but you violated the preservation of the preserve area by five feet for no reason. Setbacks have a reason that really, and I'm not saying it should never be applied. A typical example where a setback may be waived is on a side yard or a boundary line setback, if there's a wall there. there's a wall there, where the setback to pavement, and the, the setback deviation to pavement or a building because of the wall, really provides the separation that the setback was intended for, and that may be valid. I strain to find another valid reason for a setback variance.
And the way our code is designed is almost paradoxical when it comes to plan developments, because the intent of a plan development is to create development standards and uses that are specific for a particular piece of property. They, they, the purpose of that zoning district recognizes that a Euclidean zoning district does not take advantage or protect against specific standards for a particular property. Therefore, each of these documents that come before you have their own setbacks, heights, uses, et cetera. However, when you are taking advantage of specific concerns, or addressing specific threats to a property, you still have to ask for a deviation if you want something different than the Euclidean zoning district. It's, it's a process that I've never understood, but it is one that is, that is included in the plan. So when we look at plan developments, they may be asking for a reduction in setback, but is it really a reduction in setback? It's a reduction in a setback from a, a conventional zoning district. It is not a reduction in setback that's based upon a plan for that particular property. So if you were looking at a variance request on, on a residentially zoned piece of property, RS1, name a district, there are certain criteria that come in for them to ask for that reduction. Generally, seven criteria that they've got to justify, it wasn't self-created. Basically, it's a defensive-type argument. This is an odd situation, that the, the government should grant a specific reduction in standards because of these requests. Plan developments are basically, how do you best design for, and how do you best accommodate uses on a particular piece of property? So while you may see a reduction from seven feet to five feet, as a deviation, I don't understand exactly what people are requesting that reduction from. They're requesting it from, from a, a standard zoning district, and they're not asking for a reduction based upon an appropriate plan. So this, I think, goes back to more the philosophy of that zoning district than it does a request for, for additional density, at least in my mind. And that's just my own personal perspective, but I've always disagreed philosophically with the requirement to ask for a deviation from a setback for a planned development. It just seems wrong.
Okay, let me, let me ask another question about this. You said, you said earlier, John, that a setback may be waived because on another part of the site, they've added extra green space, for the lack of another way to say it. To me, that's a quid pro quo to do that. And I've been told by the lady next to you, that you cannot provide quid pro quos as a bargaining point in zoning applications.
Exactions.
I'm sorry?
Exactions. As far, you're talking about illegal donations?
No, I'm, I'm talking about, my opinion, what John suggested, we got more space over here, so let's reduce it over there.
What I think you'll see in the situations that's come before you, because you're right, if I were to look at an applicant and say, "Well, you know, if you were to, to squeeze your development over here, and provide a boardwalk, or a path, or a soccer field over here, then we could recommend approval for that," that gets to a little bit more quid pro quo, especially as it gets to the hearing level. What I have seen is someone that comes in and says, "I'm doing X, Y, and Z in this particular portion of my site." And to accommodate that, because I know that's what markets well, and that will sell easily for me, I need to reduce my setbacks, so I can reduce my, my lot size over here in this portion of the site. And when that's proposed to us, because someone looks at that as, as a better development for them to create, then no, that, in my opinion, does not create a quid pro quo situation. Because it's something that's being proposed to us, as opposed to something that the government is requiring on a private property owner.
Okay, I, I understand that. That's a subjective use of a quid pro quo, as might be applied differently. Let's, let's take for an example, to support my point. The Habitat for Humanity project, north of Terry, there was dramatic reductions in the setbacks. They were just squeezing more, excuse me, they, they were providing then less green space, just to get a standard building that they wanted to put in place. And it, and it was, there was question, not only at this board, but at the council's board. And there's no question, the sympathy for Habitat for Humanity prevailed. Good engineering logic about waiving those setbacks did not occur. And I don't think that should ever come, it shouldn't be a sympathy thing. It should be a requirement to meet the requirements without truly reasonable request. And what you suggested may, or may not be reasonable, it would be subjective, based on the case, the facts of the case.
In that particular case, Habitat did provide all of the required water management and engineering. There was a reduction requested in setbacks, and that truly became a question of consistency and compatibility, both a question for this board and for city council. Did that request allow those houses consistency with not only external developments that were nearby, but also the internal development itself? I don't mind having those discussions, because that's why we're here. That's the entire reason why we're here. Is that request consistent and compatible? Especially because they did provide all of the required engineering. I know that it was not done in a way that they had originally approved, but in terms of, of the required area for stormwater, the required grading and slopes for, for drainage, that information was submitted. So it was a simple question of, does having houses closer together allow for consistency with the rest of the development that has them further apart?
Was that underwater in the last flood?
Road high business?
To be honest with you, I would probably say that there was water in the road, but I do not know, because that was not one of the roads that I drove down.
Just, just north of the problem area.
I know the soccer fields were.
Yeah, Barney Fields was definitely covered.
And Terry Street had water.
Okay, well, that's a specific example, but getting back to my point, setbacks are there for a reason. Let's further, if you're gonna, someone's going to request that, hit them hard with why.
Could I make a suggestion? And that is, first of all, when you're making application for setbacks, and whether to modify or adjust the setbacks, you need to look at the fact that setbacks are police power. They're, they're not, let's go, how to describe this? I mean, we determine what is necessary, but when we make that determination, what is necessary, we need to make sure we're not overstepping our bounds, like any other police power authority. So there may be situations that are extrinsic, that you cannot put a clear, bright line. What I do want to point out is, one of the leading cases in the state of Flor- Florida, is a David Theriaque case, where he was representing city of Panama City, which is kind of redundant there, but that's their name. So I mean, that might be an excellent point of topic, if we wish during the workshop to talk about setbacks, and how it relates to other laws. Because you can have a use of police power, that its application sounds fine, we needed, we need the setback, but it might be unreasonably applied in a given circumstance, as John pointed out during a planned development, or it might be because you cannot have something, or it might be inadvertently causing problems with other state and federal laws, which is the point that was raised earlier. And I will still uphold my opinion on that. But we can have David come in, and David Theriaque during the workshop, discuss that, because you cannot make your decision in a vacuum of, "This is my decision, I'm keeping to it," when you've made decisions elsewhere. It creates different situations. But it's something that we can discuss during a workshop. Now, let's see, that's it for the workshop. I, I do want to talk about my item.
Wait, before, before we get there, I, I don't think we're, we're finished yet.
And, Mr. Worser, just so you know, I do actually enjoy the discussion on setbacks. I think that they're appropriate for this board and for city council, it's an important part of what we do. I think that we're probably, as far as the end goal, in general agreement. I think maybe we differ on how we get there.
Right.
But the idea of debating the setback, and what's appropriate, and why it's appropriate, I look at this being one of the, the main topics of conversation for, for at least our planned development applications.
All right, thank you for your comments.
And just to point out, Land Development Code, sections four dash eighteen ninety-two, and then following that, four different sections, just merely on setbacks. We have, whether it's a road, whether it's the right-of-way for the railroad, water setbacks, we have plenty of ordinances on the subject matter.
I have a, a concern I'd like to raise. Under the current statute, there, if we're not dealing with a major planned development, there's at least some ambiguity as to whether we're entitled to see a surface water management plan. Maybe we're not. This is a very serious situation that Benita Springs is facing right now. And while we can, we'll deal with that in the workshop, clearly, I know the time that council, city council is spending on this issue, trying to fix things. But from the zoning perspective, is there anything we can do that would be helpful in further delineating a surface water management plan, where we do not have a major planned development?
I think one of the topics that we need to go through is the idea of a major and minor planned development in the first place.
No question about it.
I, I think that the purpose from that was a carryover from, from the Lee County days, that may or may not be applicable now, because I don't see the reason to have two districts. In terms of a mi- a quick change, I think that was gonna probably take a little bit longer. And I think that time is, is now, and it's necessary. I don't ever remember seeing storms that were dropping as much rain as they are today. I think the standards that the city of Benita Springs currently employs, at the time of their creation, were very good. I thought they were above and beyond what, what other local jurisdictions were doing, and were an area we should have been proud to have. Today, I think that they're probably not enough, and we probably need to look at how we handle stormwater from the time it lands on a piece of property, until the time it gets to the Gulf of Mexico.
So that's for another day, I grant you that. But is there anything now, basically at the last hearing, I raised the question, and said, "Well, you know, maybe the master plan says this, but maybe it doesn't."
It's, it's-
So we got nothing.
Let me take a look at it. If there's something that we can do to require more information on it, because I, I think this is an area that doesn't take a lot of argument to gain support, especially now, when it comes to more information on stormwater. So if there's something we can do in the short term, we're happy to do it. And if there's something that requires a, a code change, we'll definitely let you know, so that at least you have it on your radar.
Thank you very much.
Another question, just following that up. Were there other properties that flooded during this past event, above and beyond what happened in ninety-five?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, I think there were some different areas, but what I, flooding is gonna take on two different terms. There was a lot of flooding in roadways and standing water, and there was also what you would consider flooding into structures. In terms of the structure, I'd have to take a look at the maps, because I have not compared the two. I do know there was more standing water.
Right. And I guess that would be of interest, maybe even from, you know, the zoning perspective, pertaining to building in flowways?
Flowways, we have a pretty good prohibition on what we're doing there. Floodways and flood zones is where I think we need to have a conversation, because those are the areas that, that have specific finished floor elevations, and discussions on, on freeboard, and, and how we handle those. Having higher buildings is usually a good thing, but not generally across the board, because you need to look at how you handle infill development. Some of the houses, I think, flooded, from what I understand, and I did not personally see this, so I'm only getting this secondhand, where you had newer homes that were built to current flood standards, adjacent to older homes that were built at grade, obviously water following the rules of gravity flowed to the lower home. So just the idea of building homes higher does not solve all your problems.
Right.
You have to be able to provide that balance, especially in an infill situation.
I think FEMA has told the city that the Keys, Everglade City, and then Benita Springs were the worst flooded areas in the state as a result of the hurricane. Pretty serious.
And I know after ninety-five, that the city did work with FEMA, and we went in and actually purchased some properties, and, and that may happen, you know, again.
Right, there may be some additional repetitive loss. And then, if you look at the way our disaster recovery, you follow, and that's actually a good question, thing to bring up. The disaster recovery has different calculations, and if a building has received reimbursement from FEMA in the past, it actually gets a reduced before it, it's allowed additional build-back permission, where something that's relatively new, and it's the first time, there's a lot of things that you can actually enhance. So the fifty percent rule is a little bit better situation. And then, it actually calls for staff review board for build-back, if there's interpretation questions.
I'd just like to bring up one, one area. Let's take where the flea market is, Quinn Street. Now, that area, I've been down here twenty-five years, and in twenty-five years, that area always, always floods. And nothing ever gets done about it. And always brought up in front of the city, I don't know how many times, okay? And it's always, well, you know, the state here, the county there, blah, blah, blah. What about these people that are there? I mean, you know, my heart goes out to them, but we're allowing that to happen. And when I say we're allowing that to happen, is that in twenty-some odd years, nothing's been done to alleviate the problem that's there. You know, and that's, and I think that's our fault, because I don't think we've done enough for it.
There's definitely been road capacity, drainage improvements, some of them, whether it's still worked well, there's the Maricel Flowway, and the drainage, and the different webid districts. There's been a lot of work. The problem is, is once you get high and dry for a few years, it doesn't become a priority anymore.
That's wrong. It's, you know, and-
I don't disagree with you.
And just to what you're, just to what you're saying, as far as traffic and so forth, you know, every time a case comes up in front of us, we say, "Well, traffic study was complete." When was the traffic study completed? Was it on June, July, August? How can you give a true picture of the traffic, when you're saying June, July, August? The traffic problems are from October, because every year it gets a little bit earlier, from October until May, okay? So you're not really giving us a true picture of the traffic situation. I'll give you an example. We have a development going on Terry Street and Imperial, okay? We said, "That's gonna be a problem area." Well, no, traffic study says, no, that's not gonna be a traffic area. You can go out there right now, and look at the right-hand, the left-hand turn that goes onto Imperial South, or take, look at the right-hand turn that goes north, that's a bottleneck, and that's an accident waiting to happen. And that was brought up at the meeting. And yet, yeah, no- And yet, yeah, no, fine, the traffic study says it's within the parameters, no problem. Can't do that, we can't do that. I mean, we're not getting the true, true facts. We're going from one time of the year, which doesn't really reflect the busy time of the year. And that's what should be taken in.
Now, in that case, we were reducing density. So you were making less traffic in that area.
It's.
No, we're not.
As a general, as a general rule, what's done is there is a seasonal conversion number that people do apply to their traffic studies when they're not done in season. That's the short answer. The longer answer is, the county used to do a lot of counts within the city to provide what was actually going on. They stopped doing those around two thousand eight and they continually reduce those. The city has started to pick up the slack in those areas and started counting them so that we are coming up with accurate data that people can use as the basis for their traffic reports. Some areas are going to have good data, some areas are going to be away from areas where we have counts. However, when somebody does say that they're going to have a project that generates X number of trips, there is a conversion in there that they add to it if it's done in the summer so that you can see what would happen to it during those peak months. So it is not something that's ignored, even if the study was done, you know, September, August. We do take that into account. So what you'll see is what should be there. But what I think you're really getting to is the actual impact of what you feel on the road. Just because something meets a level of service that's established in our standards does not mean you're going to consider that roadway to be free-flowing. City of Benita Springs allows level of service for certain roads to be below A, B, and C. So you, because of those standards, you're going to see delays in certain intersections at certain times. And that's going to be well within what we consider acceptable from a level of service. You can always adopt higher levels of service, but that means you're going to have to have additional capacity. That capacity is either going to have to come through additional roadways or through additional lanes or through additional improvements to an intersection. So it was a balance that was created back from two thousand two and tinkered with probably all the way, well, till today, but really till about two thousand five, said, if we have this number of cars, we'll accept this much traffic because to accept less traffic or to improve speeds would cost more than we have or more than we want to spend. And that was the balance that was struck. It doesn't mean that you're not going to wait at an intersection and it doesn't mean that there's not going to be congestion. It simply means that we've established certain number of vehicles per vehicle lane, per speed limit, per hour, based upon comparison of what we could do. Is that a long enough answer?
John, with all due respect, look at some of the roads we have out here. When the development was going in and traffic study says, okay, we can handle X amount of vehicles. Well, now the development is in, the road structure is in, and you're looking and saying, holy Christmas, what are you kidding me? I've been sitting here for forty minutes trying to get around the corner.
And to go to your concerns, I think that we realize that there are some gaps in how we're analyzing things. There was a brief discussion with council early on because traffic was not really a focus of development review from two thousand eight until recently because there wasn't much development to evaluate. Now that we're looking at traffic again, we're looking to make some modifications. It is going to take the city council to want to make modifications to how we study it and how it's approved, but those conversations are already happening.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything that they would like to see in the packets or taken out of the packets or?
I do. Just a somewhat discussion on plan developments and when they meet their threshold. What is our current?
Threshold.
I mean, well, if they haven't done any development at a certain time, they have to come back to the zoning board and to the.
We just modified that section as far as there's extensions and reinstatements. As to those sections, extensions, there was some modifications to it. As to reinstatements, other than one existing application, we now have discontinued the practice. It's not legally required to allow reinstatement if somebody did not do things within a time certain. Now, there will be an application because it did come in before we modified the ordinance. The application was pending, so it fell under that doctrine. The position the city took was, hey, in addition to where we allowed some extensions and were relatively generous, there's also a state, there was several state statutes during the recession. We were told by the governor and the legislature, we had to give two years, three years additional time. Now, whenever we have in a hurricane or emergency event, the statute number, in case you don't believe me, two-five-two-point-three-six-two, and what, or three-six-three, what it requires is that every time there's a declaration of emergency and it affects our particular county, you have to give six months plus the time of emergency and tack that on. If the applicant, they have the burden to put an application forward. We have a whole form, we have a whole system. Given a year like this year, we've had, I believe, five emergencies, not even including the extensions, meaning that in this year alone, you could pick up several years. And that's state law, we have to comply with it.
Does that answer your question, Barbara?
Okay.
Could we be copied on whatever you might have put together for?
Sure, it's on the city, are you talking about on the city website where you can actually get the forms for applications?
Just on what the latest status is with the extensions and all that.
And that might be an issue too, is a lot of things that you were asking might have been subjects of recent comp plan amendments, might be subjects of ordinance changes to the zoning section or even development standards. And I don't know if we ever route the final ordinances to you showing changes. You can always go on municide and see it.
I don't think I've ever seen them.
I've never seen it.
And because a lot of your questions are things that have been changed in the code to address it. Now, some, like setbacks, those are tried and true with the exception to one little modification that caused heartache, but those were changes. I mean, a lot of these have been around a long time. And setbacks are a good example, but some things, for example, the architectural system and the process and where in the timing of the process. Sometimes, it's no offense to zoning board, but sometimes it's better to catch them at development order, which is a later game because it gathers more fish if you're casting a wider net. So, but it does make sense for you to be able to see the most recent ordinances. And because it goes to the LPA, and some places, the LPA and the zoning board are the same entity. In this situation, we have two separate boards. That's where you would, you know, be more cognizant of it. But we'll make sure you get it or maybe even have some presentation days where you might want to have Alexis coming up, explaining changes to them prior to the ordinance adoption. And with that being said, we're continuing an ordinance to a time and date certain on transportation and it's a new requirement on transportation. We're just working, I think, with the numbers to make sure the engineering is right. It is an ordinance that would require in chapter three, you have to follow an ad code. So my part was real easy. And then in that ad code, it sets up how you're going to provide that uniformity and the city would provide you with numbers, so there's less data manipulation.
And what does it affect? What is it?
It would be for.
Transportation studies.
Right.
Well, what part of it?
Background traffic.
How to calculate the background traffic, how to.
It gets into your vesting question.
Right.
And what is approved but not yet built? What's started construction but not yet completed? How is that included in traffic studies for developments and their anticipated build-out date?
And I think that just, you know, brings it blatantly to everybody's attention that the zoning board's not in the loop right now on getting the communication on a lot of the revision.
Right.
And maybe if there, maybe, John, if you could look at it and see if there's anything that's happened in the last maybe six to twelve months that maybe we just need to have some type of list that shows anything.
Sure.
I might be alone, but I mean, I haven't seen a lot of things.
And sometimes maybe having the presentation by the person who actually, for example, we use Alexis Crespo at Waldrop Engineering for a lot of the zoning changes and modifications. So maybe having, just like she does presentations before the local planning agency and council. I mean, we may have to modify her contract to add it in, but add it in.
I think starting with, you know, a sheet distributed to us would probably be the easiest way to do it.
Okay. And then if you have additional questions, we can provide answers to that.
Richard, you had a question?
Yeah, I think one thing I'd like to see brought up at the workshop is how we make our decisions, you know? What are our guidelines? I mean, if you look through the eight hundred pages or so of the, of this document, you find the phrases that we have to make decisions based on the public interest, the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and welfare of the citizens of the city. And I remember when we were tackling the issue of the high rises, I looked again through the eight hundred pages looking for some kind of a reason, some kind of a clue about what does the city want us, the city, to look like? You know, what are the goals? You know, what is the vision? And the only thing I could find, and I couldn't tell you where I found it in here at this point, were a couple of comments. One was that we wanted, the city wants to maintain its small-town feeling. And the only other thing that I could find was a comment that said that developments should be at a human scale. And I can remember focusing on that human scale issue as I was thinking about the high-rise towers going in. And of course, that, you know, hasn't happened. But I think we, it would be helpful for our board to know in a little more detail from the council what their vision of the city is, what they want it to look like. That would help us in making decisions. And is it more than the human scale? Is it more than the small-town feeling that they want to create? And if those are the only issues, give us a little more fluff, a little more definition so that we have more guidance in making our decisions.
Let me ask you a question because I know I talked to all of you and Bob might be the only exception. I definitely offered everybody the ability to talk privately with me and I'm also accessible whenever you need me. Have you all looked at the section of the Land Development Code that talks about the zoning board's functions, their duties, their authority, the findings of facts? So we're not having an issue as to what you need for evidentiary determinations? What you're having is the substance of the case and where you would find consistency with the comp plan? Is that the concern?
No. No, my concern is, tell us what the city council believes the city should look like. And what is the spirit? What is the feeling?
The end game.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the vision?
Yeah, what's the vision?
And you know that, so it's changing, right?
Is there any place where the vision is written down?
Yes, in the comprehensive plan. But I think that even.
Can you tell me where it is in here?
The first section.
If you go into municide, yeah, if you go into municide and you look for the separate item called comp plan. So if you go municide and you go to library, there's two books. There is the ordinances and then the ordinances, you have general ordinances and you have the Land Development Code. And then there is another book called The Comprehensive Plan.
Right, I've read those.
Okay.
I don't see the philosophy anywhere.
Well, what you are looking for is under the section that's simply stated, Benita Springs, the vision. And it's at the very beginning of the future land use element. If you're looking for additional clarification above and beyond that, that is a fair question. But if you just want to know where is the vision statement, that is where it's located.
I was reading it. I mean, it sounded like you were talking about the one, you know, the one or two paragraphs that's in the vision, which is before the future land use. And that's the.
Small-town charm, green, walkable.
It's a relatively, it is a small, but when you go into the details, which is following the entire comp plan and, you know, it's set up into different processes, especially the goals, objectives, and policies of the future land use map, future land use element, of which future land use map is in there, that gives a little more definitive nature to it. And it's in every staff report as well as most applicants and even, I mean, the public. They will quote you portions of the future land use element. Now, I do want to point out that when you're looking, and the analogy I heard was best from Tim Jones, who Barbara is aware of. Many, many years ago, he explained the comp plan, which is a requirement of the Growth Management Act, is like a Bible. And the beauty about the Bible, and I'm not getting religious on y'all, is that it's subject to different interpretations. And you can interpret it one way, one person's going to see it one way, another person. It's the same as the U.S. Constitution. We're going to interpret things differently because we're all wired differently. And that's okay, and that's where you have courts who kind of figure this out. You are like a court. You are to figure this out. And that's where, when I said before, there will be arguments as well as evidence. And that's your job to be able to ferret it through and figure out at what point do you find evidence supporting your thought process that you can collectively create so that we have substantial comp and evidence making me happy? Because then I can defend your decision and go forward.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Can we quickly go through this presentation format, very quickly? There are some things that I think that we're currently getting, we can leave out. We talked about the legal description and all of that and the notaries and current ownership. Also, we get multiple pages on the people you notify. It's usually ten, fifteen, twenty pages. The question I have is, often a plan goes through several iterations. And we'll get a full-blown drawing of, or a rendering, elevation, if you will, of something that was the first submission, but is no longer anywhere near relevant. For example, there's one where it has the garages underneath. Well, the garages are completely gone, the heights changed, everything's changed. What's the purpose of having that in there? Why do we have that in there?
Because there was discussion with the council about how projects evolved. I think there was, I would use a different word, but I can't think of a better word than concern about what was being done during review from the time an application was originally submitted to the time it was presented to them. What had changed? Where had the staff really looked to influence the project? What codes or what sections of the code were looked at and how? And so as a result, it was determined and requested that we provide more historical plans so that you could see how the project has evolved since it was submitted to our door. Now, if the zoning board just wants to keep that a little shorter and sweeter, that can be done because this was a more recent change, probably in the past year or so.
Okay, so a suggestion I have would be, tell us what the current plan is. And then somewhere later on, if you feel you have to have it, just say, here's the history of the application. But to have it upfront, I want to get to, what are you asking us to do? And this is not what you're asking us to do. This is a piece of history, nice to have, but tell me what you want us to do.
Would you, and I'm looking at your handout, would you like us to include that under the conveniently listed history of property?
It doesn't.
At least it's not up in the first.
Whatever you think.
Okay.
You know, I worked with John, I sat down and based upon our conversations drew this up, but I don't think this is the be-all and end-all. So if any of you have any suggestions or think that this is. Hopefully. Hopefully, we'll wind up with substantially less paper.
And just so you know how we feel about this, this is, whatever comes from this, will answer the question for today of what you want, but it is never a static answer. It is always something as-
I agree.
Patterns evolve, as different things develop, and you need more information, different information, just let us know, and we'll start looking to provide it. This is a big change, but I look at us continuing to make changes even after this is done.
It's a work in progress, and it'll be something I'll look forward to seeing next month, as early as next month, I hope. It might take a couple of months to get it in.
You're not going to see everything as it's laid out here, but you are going to see a process where we go from what you have seen to something that looks more like this, and as codes are changed and direction is given from the council, you'll start to see more of this than you have seen. That's the goal.
Does anybody, before we get to scheduling, are you all satisfied that you said what you wanted us to say, and the direction we're taking? Or anybody upset or?
Good.
Has this been worthwhile, or is this a-
Very.
I appreciate you putting this together.
I do, too.
You think it's worthwhile?
Long overdue.
Okay. So now, we come to the scheduling for the coming year.
Thank you. I passed out to all of you a copy of a document. Jackie and I normally work on it in September and October. I have made changes this year to the document, so this is for your scheduled dates of 2018. One of the things that, when people come in for a zoning application, one of the first questions, or actually, it's always asked during the course of the meeting, which is, if I have to go to public hearing, how long will it take? It's basically the same issue as if you were taking a long-distance drive somewhere. So it gets to be kind of interesting. So we hand out these scheduling sheets to different applicants, as well as we have it posted in different locations, and it sets your meetings. We, zoning, for purposes zoning board, we still have you on Tuesday before the third Wednesday, city council meeting, would be your standard day of meeting, okay? Where it gets a little more dicey is when you get into city council's second reading of zoning ordinances. The first reading and resolutions, or final decisions, would be during the actual first council meeting. You never want anything, unless it looks like it's going to be controversial, then we would move it to the second, because evening meetings, the last thing you want is controversial zoning hearings. For she who has been here till 2:30 in the evening arguing, it's not a fun moment. We normally hold the zoning on Monday, but we do have to move it from time to time. You can see where I have it in yellow, we had conflicts, and I footnote the conflict. So the first conflict starts in January because of Martin Luther King Day, the next one is President's Day conflict. This year, we have a July 4th conflict, and I don't know if you wish to assert an opinion on that. You're fine on June 19th, whether or not we do July 17th. We have a situation, when to handle that, we're probably going to just postpone that to August, will be my recommendation for the city council's zoning hearings on those days, because we actually have a Monday, I believe is July 4th this year. So that kind of pushes it into a strange situation. The, just pointing out, and there's a state statute requirement, you have to have 10 days between the two hearings for our city council, so that's where it bounces a little weird. There's a new addition, which is staff report. So you heard today discussions that staff has to start the hearing process once the report has been deemed sufficient. And faster times, but chaotic and crazy times for purposes of staff, because I have to deal with them, so I think they're crazy during this. Once an application is deemed sufficient, we would treat that as the cutoff date, and then we would start the hearing process. Well, of course, the applicant would want to meet with them on the staff report, they were still preparing the staff report, especially if it had conditions that the applicant didn't like, and it would create a new crazy, especially when you have other work that you need to get done in the office. So we're adding that the staff report will be substantially completed before the cutoff, so you don't begin the cutoff at sufficiency. You begin the cutoff of when there's actually some staff report, which may take as long as 30 days from when the letter has been deemed sufficient. You need to still give the applicant certainty of where is the end of the road, and I think 30 days or 60, did you want, 30 days would provide that sufficiency to people, and I put substantially complete. Now, simple applications where a staff report can probably be hammered out relatively easy. Staff won't require the full 30 days, they may make it just one or two so that they can get the applicant on the road and following this process. This is the first time we've actually taken this to the zoning board. It has been something that we have always taken to city council, so I didn't know if you wanted to comment. I know that Bob, in the past, has always talked about taking the month of July off as a zoning board. I don't know if you want to have me put things in like that.
So here, I've raised this problem. I found it curious that the major cases all magically appear in July and August when no one's here.
When no one's here, yeah.
And, you know, I don't know how that happens, but it seems to me that in an effort to be transparent, we would want the major cases when people are here. I know you said to me, we're a full-time city. That doesn't preclude us from doing what's right, and to me, it's having as much participation as possible.
And I don't disagree, but I know you've talked with Mr. Theriak, Special Land Use Council, and he and I have talked about this issue extensively. I mean, a reasonable continuance for public participation is fine, keeping a case going may be more problematic from a due process standpoint. But if you have in the record that you want to take, say, the month of July off, which we have done in the past, or the month of June, you know, start in June, and the council can get the July off, because July, I have a problem anyway. I mean, we could have a no-schedules zone for that month, which probably would make things for members of the public, but it certainly would make things, because of the July 4th, that would work very well this year, if you want to take one month. Some cities take as much as two months off during the summer.
I'm sure, the Naples does.
You know, one advantage of taking, of not having a schedule, is that it automatically precludes the big cases from coming up then. If we schedule it, we schedule it, right? We're not going to have a meeting.
Right, if we know that we need to have, and quite frankly, I want to always have a quorum. The worst decision is when I can't get enough people on the zoning board here. So if people know that they want to take a summer vacation, you know, and it might give some rest to the wary, or the, and it also gives the public some certainty that there's not going to be cases on particular months, I would say, go for it.
Okay.
But let me know which months.
So if we don't-
And I would not suggest a six-month or anything like that.
No, of course not. But if we decide, if this board decides that they don't want to have hearings in July and August, is that lawful?
I think so.
I'll make a motion.
I mean-
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we not meet during July. I don't want to go two months, but I'll make a motion for one month, July.
If we're looking at timing these, did you want to maybe choose August or September as a month to not meet?
I have a prob, I have a scheduling deficiency, as highlighted in yellow-
Yeah.
-that I would love for you not to meet on June 19th, because I cannot schedule a meeting in good faith on July 4th for city council. So my preference-
You would rather see June.
I would rather see you take June, like zoning board, take the month of June and July, or maybe the months of May. Remember, the final hearing dates are the ones I also need to look at, so yours would basically give a six-week council tale.
What are you recommending?
Certainly, June 19th. I would want you to cancel that meeting.
Everybody send the motion.
Send the motion, yeah. But, June 19th?
July's a better month for a lot of us. July's a better month, and August is still a better month.
Yeah, because it sounds like there's two concerns. You have a conflict in June, and then there's a concern with public participation that would be better affected for a month delay later on in the summer, early fall.
Can we figure, I mean, we're kind of establishing a policy here, and it seems to me we ought to establish the policy based upon multiple years, rather than a particular conflict that happens to be coming up, you know what I mean? So if we said, July and August, and we can do a workaround this year on the conflict thing, seemed to me to be a-
Right.
I've got to go along with what Roger said, I can't see two months, but I can see one month, but not two months, I have a problem with two months off.
I agree.
Okay.
What's your wish, what month?
Whatever works. I mean, you know, July or August, whatever works, but one of those two months, yeah, but, or June, but-
Not both months.
Not two months, no.
And I think they should be two months in a row.
We're having two months off in a row?
Well, if we're going to do two months, yeah.
No, no, we're going, no, I said I was going by with you.
He's, everybody only wants to do one month, except me.
We'll go for the one month.
I'll make the motion again for July.
Second.
Any discussion? I have some further discussion, not about that, but-
Well, let's handle this. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Robert and Serpy.
Yes.
Barbara Brunswick Cannon.
Yes.
Chairman Kerlander.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick.
Yes.
James Royster.
Yeah, also, just remember, it's kind of like being employed, I need to take it to the big boys to make sure they agree to take the month of July off.
Absolutely. That's our recommendation.
But what I'll do is I'll put that as the recommendation.
Right.
And then we'll figure out how to fix the, now, of course, I put the wrong month, but we'll figure out how to fix the June 19th situation that then council has the July 4th, July 16th. They may cancel that month. I don't know. That'll be a council call, how to fix that. But it's no different, and this is just tentative. I mean, if we suddenly get slammed, just like this board has done, and I know Bob and Serpy remembers the days where we were doing weekly hearings, so I mean, that's always weekly hearings.
So I have a request. Out of respect for my colleagues here, when you want to schedule a special meeting, before you schedule it, could you please talk to us and make sure that we have as many people here as possible?
If they schedule, you schedule a hearing.
I think they do that, Larry.
They haven't been.
Don't you or Debbie always call? That's a function of, you or Debbie always check to see their availability on a given day.
I remember seeing memos or emails going out, maybe not since you've been on the board.
No, I requested that it go out, but it was not a policy.
Like, say, we need to, like, October 23rd is the example.
They had scheduled, and I said, you know, please notify everybody, and sure enough, certain people weren't going to be able to be here, so.
They, but city council moved to special meeting. So we have one right now, we just moved city councils, your decision to hit in lakes is going up to city council, not tomorrow, but the 23rd, to accommodate the schedule. So it's not, I mean, we do change from the dates, but this gives you some certainty, please don't, you know, schedule your vacations around the zoning hearing date. You guys have just the Tuesday on the schedule to be concerned about. And once this is finalized, I'll make sure you guys get a copy.
Thank you.
Discussion? Yes. Mr. Chairman, I noticed that three of these dates are not on Tuesdays.
Correct.
Ooh.
Yep. April 18th is a Wednesday.
Then that goes 17th, thank you.
And September 17th, and November 19th are Mondays.
Right.
Okay, so that means 18th and 20th. Let me check my calendar, and I apologize.
And you'll send us an updated?
Yes, after it goes to council. So, once I have council's blessing on this, but that's why I wanted to get you guys, because extra eyes always help. It does.
It does, you're right.
It's a Microsoft calendar, I could be wrong.
No, I'm going to check, but.
A quick question, it was brought up to me, just for some clarification, going back to the presentation and the packets. It says on this outline that there would be environmental and transportation findings included. Does that mean you want to see the actual transportation study as submitted by the applicant, and the environmental analysis as submitted by the applicant only electronically? Or did you want those as hard copies in with the packet?
No, that was not my intention.
Actually, if there's a flux map, I would like to see that in a larger size also.
I would prefer to have both environmental and the traffic study in hard copy.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to make sure you're getting what you want, so that's no problem either way.
I didn't have a point of view on it.
Are you looking for the executive summary or the actual data and analysis?
The data.
You want the data.
Yeah, the report, which reaches conclusions, as well as how they arrive at it.
Right, but do you need the full data, the run of the models, like the raw data?
I'm not thinking this, I'm thinking this.
Okay.
10 pages or so.
Okay. Not the full engineering study.
So you just want a summary in the hard copy, and you want the backup as, there's not a problem?
Thank you.
I was thinking that's the engineering, if you want to double-check it.
I'm not going to.
Okay, is there any public comment? Is there anything else to come before the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, we're adjourned.